Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to November 3rd, Wednesday night, to school committee's meeting. Please rise and say for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to read our mission statement for the Douglas Public Schools. The Douglas Public Schools offers diverse learning experience that meet the academic, social, physical, and emotional needs of all students. We provide a safe, supportive, and challenging learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. Decisions are made in the best interest of our students. Thank you. I'd like to call our student representative, Senator Sophia Sherrier. Did I mess your name up?
Actually, Sherrier.
Sherrier, sorry. I'm so sorry.
My name is Sophia Sherrier, and I'm a senior at the high school. I'm here to share with you some of the events and news of what's happening at our school. First off, the Douglas High School athletic teams have had an exciting past few weeks. Each of the soccer, volleyball, cross-country, golf, and field hockey teams held their senior night games to honor the senior athletes in one of their last home games of the season. The Central District's tournaments have also led to great success for our athletics. The varsity volleyball team faced BMR in the district finals and put up a strong fight last Friday, but ultimately lost. The Douglas Boys varsity soccer team also made it through to the finals and faced Bromfield this past Saturday, giving great efforts and a tough 3-2 loss. Each of the teams is looking forward to getting back out there for the upcoming Massachusetts State Tournament. Registration for winter sports is also now open on Family ID, and it's important to note that if your child is playing a winter sport, there will be a mandatory meeting on Thursday, November 4th, at 6:30 PM in the gym with our athletic director, Mrs. Sokol, to go over the rules and regulations of being a student athlete. Each student needs to attend with a parent or guardian. In other news, Halloween festivities and other spirit events also took place at DHS last week. The DHS Student Council had held their annual haunted hallways event where kids can make crafts and color Halloween coloring pages, and those who dared could walk through the spooky haunted barnyard-themed rooms. The event was very successful, and the kids had a blast being able to once again experience normal Halloween festivities. The senior class of 2022 participated in the annual Halloween parade, were soon dressed up in costumes ranging from Star Wars to Scooby Doo, and walked through the middle, elementary, and primary schools to display their costumes and wave to the kids. Furthermore, the students and staff from our Stars and Stripes class spread kindness and good cheer with their treats from the Kindness Revolution cart. Additionally, there are several upcoming community events and important dates at DHS. The Douglas community is encouraged to support Aleah Martinson and Brianna Taff's senior project as they are selling adjustable purple and white bracelets where all proceeds will be donated to the NICU at Milford Hospital. Each bracelet costs $5, and order forms can be completed online in a Google form. The first annual Douglas alumni turkey trot for all current and former members of the DHS community will be held at Douglas High School, at the Douglas High School Cross-Country Course at 8:00 AM on Thanksgiving Day. There's no fee, though donations are encouraged, and prizes will be given out. DHS has also started an after-school tutoring and homework help on Wednesdays, on Tuesdays, and Thursdays in the library from 2:00 to 3:00. Students can drop in for help with their work, and no advanced signup is required. Lastly, parent-teacher conferences will be held on Monday, November 15th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, and a signup form will be sent out by Mr. Romano. Conferences will be by appointment only, but there is the option to either hold a conference on Zoom or in person. First quarter grades close this Friday, November 5th, and report cards will be issued on November 9th. Thank you for your time and attention. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment and communications. Do we have any old business that we want to discuss?
We do not.
Do we have any new business then? We're turning it over to the superintendents?
We do not.
Okay. So now it's the superintendent's report.
Right. Welcome, everyone. I have on here COVID-19 update. I think this is the first time in probably six or seven months there's nothing new and exciting to update in the world of COVID. Nothing really has changed. I think I mentioned in one of my newsletters, the commission has extended the mandate through January 15th, but we continue to track the information. I send it out once a week to people, be more than happy to answer questions if the committee has them. I will say this, I want to shout it again to the nurses. They put together a great little packet that I sent out, and I'll send it out again on Friday. Just a little information for parents as to what does symptomatic mean, when should you keep your kids home, what does quarantine mean, what does isolate mean, and timelines. So that'll be going out in my newsletter on Friday. So I guess I did have some stuff to update on COVID, but if people have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them regarding COVID.
Anybody? I think we're good.
All right. Moving on to our school improvement plan. Mr. Romano is out today, so he will present his next week. So we're going to have our principals go, they're going to update you on what their school improvement plans were from last year, what they were able to accomplish, and those plans from last year, to bring closure to that, and then update and highlight what the plans are for this school year. Mr. O'Brien is going to go first, and then Ms. Sosha and Mr. Bell will go together since a lot of their goals and improvement plans are combined. So we'll start with Mr. O'Brien.
Good evening. All right. Not sure how much information I can give on the school improvement plan last year that went through. Through no fault of the staff or the students, they had three different building principals in one calendar year, so it was tough. But I did meet with Mr. Olson towards the end of last year with the school council. We went through his school improvement plan, the ideas that he had. We met several times before I started, and then we blended them with the superintendent's district blueprint, and that's what you see in front of you. The goals and how they line up with the superintendent's blueprint, it's highlighted, so you can see the coordination between the two plans. And this is a very basic school improvement plan. We have to get in, going to get my fingers on the pulse, see how things are going, and after a year and a half of, two years of COVID, it's almost like we're starting all over again. So it is actually a good time to have these plans and go through it, but we do face some hiccups moving forward. And real quick, we just want to promote the growth of all students with high-quality instructions. So it's important for me to be in as many classrooms as I can, giving feedback to the teachers, and seeing the great things they do each and every single day. Very pleased at how high of a pedagogical skill the teachers have in the school. It's really, it's heartwarming to see how strong of a staff we do have. And we want to do that just to make sure we improve learning for all students. A lot of these students, they have gaps from COVID, and we're trying to catch them up and move forward with the curriculum as well. And you'd think you'd have a great plan. As Mike Tyson says, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the face. It's a big punch from COVID, and we just make it through, but I do like the attitude and effort that I'm seeing from everyone in the building. The CPT period that we had put into our daily schedule is paying huge dividends. The fact that all the teachers from a grade-level team can meet daily, and our school adjustment counselor pops in at least once a week so we can address student issues, and those concerns are brought up through the student support team as well. So there's a lot of redundancy in communication just to make sure we can take care of every student and their needs that they have, and try to prevent some of the, some of the problems, some of the issues that they're going through, and keep them to a minimum. And you can see there on page three just how often that they do meet. Sixth and Seventh is five times per week, and Grade Eight at least three times per week, if not better. And that's because of some glitches in their schedule, because teachers don't all, some of our teachers elected to teach enrichment classes, which are going very well. Enrichment like yoga, wellness, and the wellness class is very highly desired. We still have students saying, can we transfer into that? So it's good that students realize they need to take a pause and work on their mental health as well, in a very proactive nature. And then develop professional development, trying to embed that into faculty meetings, and of course, we have our PD days, but always looking for tools that we can add to our toolbox. So if I'm in a class and I see a teacher do something great, I would love to share that with the other staff members, that this is what they do well. So there's a lot of communication going on there. Goal number two is one I'm very excited about, is strengthen and enhance local community partnerships. And we're looking really to make this a community-centered school, that we know the outside agencies, we know that faith-based organizations, the people in the town, really take care of it. I think Douglas is a very special place, and it has that sense of community, but how can we make the middle school, or all the schools, really heartbeat of that community? We did have the district attorney's office come in to do a presentation on internet safety and what they need to do, and we will be following that up with what we call district attorney roundtable meetings, where they come in, they'll come in with DMH, Department of Mental Health, DCF, other wraparound services, and just explain what they're seeing of the school districts across the Commonwealth, issues that may come up, things that we see in other communities that we could try to get a head start on preventing or expanding, depending on the nature of that program. But that's a real, it's great to network, because once you put a name with a face, whether it's a DMH worker, DCF, or people from the district attorney's office, it works. I used it in all the districts, and it's very well worth the time and the effort.
Sorry to interrupt. Was that a presentation to the staff from the DA?
That was to the students. We had to do it through Zoom.
Yep.
And the staff could see it and the students. Just want to keep them safe, let them know some of the consequences of some of their actions online, because we did see that a lot. And just let them know that there's some not-too-nice people out there. We want to make sure that they're safe. So posting something as simple as a picture in a soccer uniform, someone could really easily find out where they're going, what they're doing at the school, you don't know who you're talking to. Ellen Miller from the district attorney's office shows a nice cartoon, and it's a dog on a computer, and I think the caption was like, "I thought it was a cat," and it's a dog type, and little things like that, just to age appropriately, but let kids know that, you know, there's dangers out there. And then trying to make sure that they leave a positive internet footprint for when they go off to higher education or to the workforce. I'd hate to see a mistake that they make at 11 or 12 hurt them when they're in their twenties.
Thank you.
We talked about communication. Our Grade 7 team is piloting Class Dojo to see how that works with the community. I'd like to see one platform where all the teachers are on the same platform and can give those messages out to their parents. I think we all know what it's like to have 100 unread emails in our inbox, and that gets, so this is right there on the cell phone, the Class Dojo. Two of our younger teachers, or newer teachers, put together a PD for that, and they're tracking that progress to let the rest of the school know how it's going. I think that'd be very effective for communicating with parents. We are working with the Kitchen, Raquel Hammond, looking at starting a garden. There's little things like that to really enhance our community nature of it. And of course, we're going to see throughout this our SEL, how do we work on the social-emotional learning? How do we have kids develop the skills, the appropriate coping skills to get through the challenges that they face? Our third goal, Douglas Middle School, improve the entire school climate and culture for all stakeholders. This goes right to, again, the superintendent's blueprint. We just want to improve the overall culture at the school. We want to create a situation where both students and staff look forward to coming to school each day, and at the end of the day feel very rewarded for their work, and they leave it. If you ever saw a middle school dismissal on a Friday, it's like they got shot out of a cannon, and we see some of the staff members with six or seven bags of books and grading and everything slowly working off to the parking lot. We want to create this really invigorating atmosphere at the school. We do assemblies, we call them community meetings. We do that approximately once a month. One of the things we did have to cross out was perfect attendance, just because we don't want students coming to school sick and possibly spreading it, so there was a line drawn through that on my notes, just because we don't want anyone spreading illnesses in this time. But we really want students to step up and really take ownership of their learn. We want to expand our athletic and co-curricular programs. I believe it was the end of September, you folks as a committee approved after-school enrichment programs, and that'll be probably here in the next school committee meeting, how well those are going. But we're meeting with the high school administration to see what can we do to really help the sports program between middle school and high school. I think it's important that every child has an opportunity outside of the academic day to show off their skills, whether it's music, band, theater, athletics, like a home for everyone at the school, and that really helps that community sense of it. I was fortunate enough to be able to sneak off to the cross-country meet yesterday at the Christian school in Whitensville, and our kids were running, and it was just so nice to see a whole group of kids. It was the league championship-type thing, and it was just a ton of parents, a ton of kids, and it was just really heartwarming to see that. Kids that probably would not be, you would classify as the athletic group. It's a nice mix of kids for cross-country. We wanted to reestablish the PTO, and I'm proud to say that Mrs. Larson has been a huge help for that, along with Dean of Students Matt Aronian. Mrs. Larson was kind enough to present a little secret surprise for Halloween for our staff. She pulled them all and got what kind of snacks they like, and put on this huge tremendous spread for our teachers, and it was a surprise to them. They came down. It goes a long way, little simple gestures like that. So I do want to publicly thank Mrs. Larson for that. So we have that already up and running, and we look to expand on that as students from the elementary school come up to the middle school. We had the machine Jesse Green do a school-wide presentation that was very well received by the students. He had a, if you don't know Jesse Green, he had National Geographic TV show. He carves trees with a chainsaw. He talked about his struggle, and it really pointed to grit and overcoming adversity, and he told how many times he failed trying to get to where he's at now, and he wants to share those lessons with students today. To keep, you know, 300 middle school students' attention for an hour, he did a tremendous job, and a lot of the kids wanted to see him afterwards and take selfies with him on the way outside of school. But it's little things like that that we want to do to really improve the climate at the school, to let, show students to have that growth mentality, the growth mindset mentality, and that's just a little step to do that. Mr. Olson was big on the four Rs, but we did have a presentation, four Rs, respect, responsibility, resilience, and results. Doesn't exactly roll off the tongue. The superintendent had a guest speaker at the beginning of the school year come up with a basic mantra or rubric for behavior, and is it kind? Is it truthful? Does it help the situation? So those three questions really help us with anything that we're dealing with at the school. We really want to get in local and global citizenship and teach students empathy, because I think that's the biggest thing missing with the challenges of COVID, is that empathy for the other person, and that's been a focus of our SEL classes so far. To really have that empathy, put yourself in the other person's shoes, and move forward. And that's part of our SEL curriculum, and again, Kayla Vidian, our new school adjustment counselor, has been sending out material pretty religiously, and I love the fact that the teachers share every good thing that they have with each other. It's a nice environment, and we just want to make it stronger. And we want to give back to the community. We helped with the high school had a movie night. We joined in, invited the kids. They had to bring a couple canned goods for the food pantry, especially as we get into the holiday season. We want to help make sure we can take care of anyone that needs anything during this And again, that resilience and grit, we started, we had last week our first student of the month breakfast, where we invited the three winners from each grade, and it's three awards that they can get, academic excellence, citizenship, and then that grit, that resiliency award. And that's always been my favorite when I've seen it out of the district, because some of the students that win that, I don't think they've ever been recognized at school before, and the parents are absolutely thrilled. I'd like to thank the Kitchen staff for putting together a great spread, and it was just really nice to see parents come in with their child to celebrate the wonderful things that they were doing. And one of those, yeah, is the grit. That's part of our improvement plan, to instill that growth mindset with the students. I don't want to spend too much time just reading off everything that you have in front of you, but I would like to open up to any questions you have or comments through the chair that I'd like.
I have a question. The iPass system, is that being revamped district-wide?
That was a request by Mr. Olson. That's our student information system, where you find out and track. The system is a little bit clumsy, but it's also a system like that, Ms. Keegan, close your ears, please, very expensive. So we just want to start exploring and see if there are better options out there. But you are, it's a significant expense. I'm not sure where the capital is for this, but we wanted to start researching and see what other schools use, where it could dovetail into other programs as well. There's some programs out there that are easy to use, but it doesn't mesh with the state when it collects the data that we have to submit. iPass is good with the data, but it's not user-friendly, especially for scheduling or looking students up. It's a little dated. The company is, I think, struggling. Not as much research, resources put in to fix it, but that's something we'd like to explore moving forward. And I'm reaching out to my colleagues across Central Mass to see what do they have for our student information systems. That will be good. But again, that's a big expense. We just wanted to get the ball rolling on that.
Okay. So that would just be within the middle school would be using something new?
No, it would be district-wide.
Okay, that's my.
iPass is, there's about a half dozen programs out there. They're very, very, very expensive. It's not, and there's a lot of labor and cost associated switching over from one to the other, and it takes time.
I do agree it's not user-friendly.
We can all agree that it is not user-friendly. Correct. I think we can get consensus very quickly on iPass not being user-friendly. Correct. It is also on the continuum of cost. It is probably on the cheaper side of the cost.
And I had a question about your walkthroughs. I think that's great, and you have a goal to, you know, do quite a few of them, so I think that's awesome. And my question is, what's the outcome of them? Do you, I know you're doing assessments, do you also provide, like, any sort of recommendations or comments about, like, things that you're seeing?
For the walkthrough?
Following the walkthrough.
Yes, we meet with the teachers after the walkthrough. What I do personally is I give them a draft of the notes that I have to make sure I didn't miss anything, and then we sit down, we go through it, and it's never a gotcha moment. What are you doing well? If you had to teach this classic, we really want to teach a lot of self-reflection. And then there's some really higher-level stuff that the teachers are doing that they don't know it's higher level. It just comes second nature to them. It's just, this is how I do it. But if you're used to observing classrooms, it's really top-notch. And then we get, I won't embarrass anybody, but I spoke to one teacher, and I said, "That was just fantastic. You were incredible." She got a little teary-eyed, and I said, "No, no, you, you know, don't doubt yourself. This is great stuff." My goal is to do 500 official classroom visits. I try to do three before I do official walkthrough, just so I could sense the classroom of the students, the teachers, what they're doing on, and then we just look at it as a learning experience. What can we provide teachers, more tools in their toolbox to make them stronger educators? It's probably the favorite part of my job.
Has there been any sort of formal reaching out about the new schedule this year? I know, like, anecdotally, you've had meetings with people. Has there been any sort of surveys or any, like, in terms of the communication?
We do have surveys coming up, and I think after all the COVID activity, I think parents were a little bit surveyed out.
Yeah.
At the beginning of it, you know, take a survey about the surveys, you know, that type of thing. We are planning on doing a survey. I know the staff really appreciates that schedule.
Yeah.
It's good for them. The students like having that rotating schedule, so they're not having the same teacher after lunch every day, or first thing every day. So it changes up quite a bit.
Yeah.
We have to button up some of our related arts and extra enrichment classes moving forward to next year, but most of the teachers I've spoken to said, try to keep it as close to this as we can.
Yeah.
We do have to make some minor adjustments, but it seems to be working well.
Anecdotally, I've heard the same, same thing from a parent and student.
And that's all Mr. Olson. He put that together. Thank you.
I just wanted to come on a few things. It's too bad Mr. Romano wasn't here, because this was kind of also directed towards him. I liked what you said, I'm going to give you a whole bunch of things. First of all, that self-reflection comment that you made about the teachers and observing them, I think that's awesome, because, not to knock some teachers, but there are teachers that have said to me and have said to others that they're not good at public speaking. It's, I always find it ironic that I'm like, you're sitting in front of everybody speaking, and like, that is not something that they enjoy doing. They're very nervous, they shake, they, some of the teachers, they'll look over your head when they're speaking, and I'm like, I wonder how my kids actually can, you know, really comprehend things and really, like, take everything in when a teacher isn't, like, looking directly in their eyes and looking over their head. And so maybe teachers don't realize that's what they're doing, because when I go in for a conference or something, I'm like, wow. And, you know, and I ask my kids, I'm like, how do you do in that class? And is there, you know, but I don't think a parent's going to say that to a teacher, and maybe a teacher doesn't realize that. So I really like that you're doing that, and I wish that we would do it across the board, actually. I think it'd be helpful, so kudos to you.
I know teachers are very comfortable talking to students, but when it comes to talking to other adults, they're...
And that, yes, that could be very well it, too. I agree. But you also brought up another good point that I think might have been missed, but I liked what you said about how you're trying to help kids, like, we live in a time, and I know this was brought up a few weeks ago by somebody in kind of his presentation, I don't think was received the way it was intended, but I think sometimes people think that we're teaching things in the school that maybe we're not necessarily doing, or I also think that kids are exposed to things that us parents don't know that they're exposed to, and they don't know how to react, or as a principal used to say, like, middle school is a very quirky age. Like, kids are going through a lot of awkward moments, and by having things, like, by saying a comment like that, I think that's great, because that's important, that we are helping these kids navigate places that they really don't know how to navigate appropriately. But to that, I like that you're talking about promoting after-school activities, because that's something that really lacks in in a town like this. I grew up in a town like this. Basically, you have the cornfields to hang out in, kind of thing. Like, you just, it's just a place for trouble, because there's nothing else to do, and I feel like we need more of that in middle school, because my point to all this is that in BBT, for example, there's been some comments on the freshman class being one of the rudest classes, not to knock BBT, because BBT is an excellent school, I'm not saying that, but that comment to me says that something was missing in middle school, and we all know it was mostly, a lot of it was COVID, but these kids were locked up, and they didn't have those opportunities that I think would have helped them be better students, because that's not who these students were coming from Douglas. They're, these kids are good, but in that school, they're seeing a lot of behavior issues that they've never experienced with their freshman class.
I think across the globe, and I think if you do any type of Google search, you see a lot of violence in school, and we're not spared for that here in Douglas as well. A lot of times, I don't believe it's a lack of will, students trying to behave. I think it's a lack of skill. They don't know how to process that information or process how they're feeling. We all knew that, know that adolescence is a time for change, but very recently, they did some MRI studies with the brain, and the reward system that the brain, I tell the students, that the feel-good juices, if you score a goal, get 100 on a test, ask for the movies, anything that makes you feel good. When you're, during that stage of brain development, what's most important for adolescents is peer approval and risk-taking, which is a very dangerous combination for 13-year-olds. So when you try to explain that to the students, that, okay, this is, your brain's trying to trick you a little bit right now, and go through it, and not minimize how they feel, because to them, not, not being able to sit next to your friend at lunch would be like us losing our job. It's very real to them, and so we have to honor how they feel, and then address it and work through it. It's very easy to say, ah, yeah, it's not a big deal, but to them, it is. And I think that way, you build that trust, you build that relationship, and the teachers are doing the same thing, talking to their kids. I'm very proud that if there is an incident outside of school, students race to tell a trusted adult. a trusted adult. I always believe you protect a school from the inside out. Create that environment where students want to share what's going on to help it. But also, we have to help them navigate adolescence. And these students haven't had a normal school year at the middle school, the eighth graders, ever. We are bringing lockers back in November, and that got a lot of students excited, because they missed out on lockers, so they're thrilled to decorate the inside of them. But I agree with what you're saying. It's a tough time, and if we don't help them, if we don't give them activities to push their energy and thoughts, they'll find their own. And what they'll find will not be, not be as safe as what we can provide in school.
And there's not a lot of sports programs, so it's good to have an outlet for those kids that aren't like the sports kids, they're not the art kids. There's something there for everybody, and I think that, that, you know how important it is, and I think that's good, that you have that like in your forefront right now, and it's not on the back burner. It's, it's something that you know needs to be.
Thanks. I'll be the first to say I'm not the brightest bulb in the drawer, but I treat the students the way I would want my own children treated, and that's the rule of thumb. And I want my kids involved in productive activities, not finding their own nonsense to get into. They found enough nonsense on their own.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have one more question about, just timeframes around these things. So has, is there like a timeframe that's sort of thought about with each one of these, like late lessons or after-school programs? Like, is there, like, if we're curious about it, we want to find out more?
That was a conversation we had over the summer. Some of these things we already accomplished, like just starting the PTO, we already did that. But when this first plan came out back in May, and then was restructured to line up with the blueprint over the summer, yeah, these are ideas that we have. It's, it feels like we've been in school already for a year. It really has just been two months, you know? So we're looking at that, and at least setting the groundwork and say, this is our vision far, and our first step is to get students interested into these clubs, to get it supported. And I'm very thankful that we were able to get that passed in September, and just build that momentum. I know Mr. Bell has a tremendous program at the elementary school, so I think these students will be expecting that when they come through. I think the parents would be expecting that when they come through. So it's just, you know, keep moving forward, one step at a time.
So it's, is this something that you're revisiting frequently?
Yes.
To sort of see, okay, when can we initiate this? When can we initiate this?
Just one more question. How are you unstaffing? I'll ask all of you here if you're still missing any staff.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
If you're still missing any staff, or are you, I think you said you were going to hire somebody? It might have been Mr. Bell.
Are their positions still open?
Any positions, staff?
We have, one position's still open at the middle school. We were able to hire an excellent instructional assistant that starts on Monday. That was a need we had since August, so I was thrilled to fill that. There's one more position on the books that we could fill. I want to make sure that it's absolutely necessary before we donate capital to that.
The email that went out and that got circulated through the different, gave people some addition, we're still not fully staffed, but we've been able, we met today, and we've been able to peck away at that list, so we're moving, that email helped, as did whoever sent it out on social media as well.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
The dynamic duo. See, see, I can, I can be creative.
All right, how's it going tonight? We are going to start by talking about our goals from last year and kind of the progress we made, some of whom we made more progress than others, just because of some of the limitations we had because of COVID, but we made progress in all of them. The first one that we had was implementing the ST math program with our elementary students. So we did that K through five. And we had, we did professional development with staff. Because of the hybrid model, remote model that we did, a lot of that implementation happened with students doing it at home. And so we didn't have, we didn't reach the number of minutes that we needed to reach. So it's hard to determine how effective it was. I will say that we're continuing to use the program this year, and because we're able to do it during the school day, when the teachers are doing small groups and things like that, we are doing much more participation with our students, the number of minutes. And we are seeing growth with the students already in the two months that we've been using it. So it's a neat program. It's, for those of you that don't know, it's a, it's a computer-based program that works with students on math, but it has zero language with it. And so that, even if they have difficulties with reading, they're still able to, still have the same chance that any other student would have to do the math skills. And a lot of times, the reading part holds kids back from math, and so it's a neat, different way to look at math. The problems are, I mean, the first time I looked at it, sometimes I had to like click through to kind of think what it was doing, but it gives you the positive feedback or the negative feedback, and it's a little repetitive, so the kids kind of get it. And as, now that we have kids that have been doing it, some of them started even the year before with some piloting, our kids know how it works, and they, they'll get introduced to a new problem, a new concept, and it's amazing how quickly, they almost get it quicker than the teachers do sometimes, just because they've been doing this now for a couple of years. So it's a neat program, and we're glad that we implemented it, and we're excited to continue to use it this year. We actually have a professional development that we are trying to schedule some further work, just looking at the data that the teachers get from that to guide the instruction. So even though the goal is finished, we're continuing to work with the program, and we like the program. It's making some positive impact with our kids. Our second goal that we had was on implementing a new reading curriculum series. So we adopted Wonders 2020. We had used Wonders in the past, but they had an updated version. There's a lot of similarities with the old version and the new version, but there was also some significant differences. So we did some professional development with staff. Again, with COVID, it made some of those implementation pieces a little tricky, just because the way that we taught looked very different, and so teachers had to really work to implement a new curriculum in a whole different format for schooling also. And so again, this year, we're seeing what it really looks like on a regular five-day school week with kids at school, and it's doing a nice job with our students. And we're going to talk about our goals for this year. Last year, we went through creating a new K through five literacy plan that involved a lot of different changes. And so Wonders 2020 is a part of that, but it's not the only component that we have. And so we've kind of, we got a foundation on that last year, and then this year, we're going to continue to build on that with some different pieces that we're doing. And I'll let Cindy do the next goal.
Okay. So it's been really nice to have a pre-K to five kind of a team here, and it works out well, because we want those programs to feed all the way through and not just end at grade one. So with the reading wonders, with the ST math, everything is, we're all on board. So that's a nice piece to it. This goal was a school-to-school connection goal that we tried to, we did our best with it last year, but again, because of COVID, we were limited. We were trying to team up fifth graders with first graders and make like a buddy program. So the only thing that we really got out of it last year was that the fifth graders sent notes down to the first graders, and the kids were thrilled with it. So you'll see when we talk about this year is that we're going to really work on that, and we already have started doing that. So just to help them with social, emotional, maybe with a step-up day at the end of the year, to come and show the building to them. So there are a lot of different ideas that we've had, but last year, we were very limited. We couldn't get the kids together. It was risky to do that health-wise, so that was that goal. And then I think this one was one of my goals. I don't think Mr. Bell had this one. It was a community reading, and again, because of COVID, I was limited. We did, did end up having community members come in in March to do some reading to the students during Read Across America Week, and so that was one thing, but we're trying to build a little bit more on that program to have it more often than just that week in March. Again, we were limited trying to bring people into the building. Okay, any questions on last year's before we go into this year's? Okay. So this year's, the first one, we've talked a little bit about this one when we did the data reports, implementing the new assessment tool that we've moved to, the Renaissance Star. So we're using this new tool, we're providing professional development for our teachers. We've already done one assessment. We'll be doing another one in January, another one at the end of the year. So the goal here is always to improve instruction. Use that data to do our groupings in our classrooms. The big difference here is that the teachers administer this themselves. And in the past, with the Ames Web Plus, they were not seeing that data. They would see one report and kind of, it got put to the side, honestly. They knew who, who the kids at the bottom, who are the ones at the top, but you didn't see specifics. And this is one that will give us the specific reports for every child. They know exactly where they're falling. They know who's on the borderline of being on the watch, or who's on the borderline for being need of intervention. And so it helps them with their instruction in the classroom. We're also going to be implementing, we haven't done this yet, I think the Title I is going to start, what they call CBMs. So this is your progress monitoring, so they might do it every two weeks. It's curriculum-based measurement assessments. They're one-on-one, administered that way. They're one-minute quick hits. So it could be on one specific skill in math. It could be just multiplication up to 100. It could be addition up to 10. So they have all different skills that you can choose. In reading, it could be nonsense words. It could be reading orally a passage. So classroom teachers will be able to use that as well if they choose to. And it might be for, you know, your struggling students, where they want to see that two weeks. I implemented the strategy, is it working? And there are so many reports, I have to tell you. Yeah, you could go in there and spend hours and hours. So we had some professional development, just looking at some of the reports that we thought would be useful right now. We still have to learn more about it. Hopefully, in January, there'll be a parent report coming out as well, so that you can see some growth, and you can see the difference between beginning of the year and January. We just haven't really honed in on which report we're going to give out to parents,
Our next goal is on literacy, so kind of continued with last year. Like I said, we did the Wonders 2020 implementation, and we also worked on that K through five literacy plan. And this year, we're doing a lot of the implementation of that literacy plan. So like we shared during the data meeting, we've consulted with Claire Landrigan, and she's coming to work with our staff for three days already this year in, it's about September. And then she's going to come again in December, and then I believe in February, again, to work with the grade-level teams for half-day sessions with each grade. And the focus of that work is primarily on small group instruction and interactive read-alouds, and kind of just bringing reading alive for kids. So we can teach the Wonders 2020 curriculum, and if it's a two-week plan where they go through that every two weeks, it can become very dry and monotonous, and we need to bring some life into that. And so this is giving us some great ways to supplement that, that core curriculum that we have, and get kids excited about reading, and get kids to really dive into what reading is, and how to use it, and why it's beneficial, and all those great things we wanted to do. And so, you know, along with that, we're also building our book library. And so last year, we made, I think we purchased about $8,000 worth of books last year. We have some Esser money that, with the grant that we're going to spend this year also to add to that collection. And those are, you know, books for read-alouds for teachers, it's books for small groups for kids, it's books on just a lot of different topics and varieties that like, if they're learning about weather, then there's a whole tub of books at a lot of different levels on weather. They are from diverse authors and have diverse characters, and we're really trying to expose our students to some, some different resources than just that Wonders curriculum. And so that's a big goal that we have this year is continuing to build that library, and then teaching our teachers how to, how to use that library to help support the learning of the kids. And then we're also continuing to work with our vertical teams to make sure our curriculum's on track. We have, we have our reading curriculum, we have our writing curriculum. Those will always mesh together as well as we'd like them to. We have, you know, foundations at K in one, but then we stop using foundations, but we still have students that have phonics needs. So what are we doing to fill those, continue to support those students with that? And so a lot of our work this year is just making sure that we have a consistent, we have a plan for what literacy should look like K through five, where students are engaged in the reading, excited about reading, and making the growth that we need to make in learning those skills that have. So that's, that's kind of our goal for this year with literacy.
I just wanted to add, too, on the PG Day, we had all the books that we had ordered from last year just in piles, and we weren't quite sure how we were going to put those together into our library bookroom kind of bins that we have. And the teachers just, I said to them, what makes sense to you? Put them together, and they did it within, you know, they just all pitched it K in one, all in one room. They redid the whole library that day. It was just amazing to see. They said, you know what? It's not friendly in here. Bullets and boards went up, you know, books got labeled, they all got put in their place, and within no time, it was awesome to just see them all work together. And now it looks inviting, and it looks like it's a nice place to be, and the kids are excited, they just started taking up books. So it's been awesome. All right. And the last goal is that grade five and grade one connection. So this year, we're pushing to have like a monthly schedule so that they will meet. So the first meeting was out on the track. So we had two first graders, and the numbers don't balance out, because we don't have as many fifth graders, as first graders as we do fifth. So then we thought, well, gee, a first grader might feel a little intimidated sitting with a fifth grader, so we paired them up. So they're in partners, they sat on the field, and overcame some of the fifth graders. It was just pretty random, just walk over to a pair sitting down on the track, and they read books to them. They'd grab a book and read a story to them. So the kids were so excited, it was a beautiful day, it was a matter of maybe half an hour we gave them, loved it. They came back. I heard fifth graders saying, I wish we could do this for kindergarten, too, you know? They just thought it was cool. So for November, we were going to do math games with dice or cards. So my teachers will put together a few card games and things that they'll put down like on a file card to bring over to the fifth graders. It could be war, it could be which one's greater, it could be addition, subtraction, anything. And the fifth graders will play, will do it upstairs in the gym or in the foyer, and have fun with that for about a half an hour. December, we're thinking holiday cards and bring them down to the senior center. So, and then we're hoping fifth grade will kind of jump in with some of their ideas. So we haven't filled in the whole year, but it's fun, it's exciting. And then, of course, during the end of the year, they could have them over for step-up day, they could maybe have lunch together, a picnic lunch is what Mr. Bell had mentioned. So there's a lot of possibilities there, fun for kids.
And help bridge that between, I mean, especially for those first graders, getting them comfortable coming over to the elementary school, getting them excited about coming over, meeting some of the staff that are over there. So I think there's a lot of positives. Our fifth graders get to do some mentoring and working with younger kids, which anytime you get to be a leader, you kind of step up your game a little bit. So there's just some neat stuff that we get between, with the connections between the two grades. So those are our goals. Do you guys have any questions?
I was curious, is the STAR information that has already been collected, is any of that going to be delivered within the parent-teacher conferences?
It might be shared, like as a, we don't have the reports that are going home yet, because really, in order for the reports to start being beneficial, seeing that growth, and so that second piece of data will, then we'll have a trajectory. Does that make sense? But I do think some of the teachers, a lot of it's already been shared, like with our Title I selection, a lot of parents were like, why, why did we get selected? Well, there's, there are conversations that we're having that. I think you can definitely ask that information at the conferences, and the teachers will have it and can talk about where, where your child's at. I think most of them will probably share, along with the grades, it's an important piece to say, this is where your child is.
Have they adjusted things based on what they've already gotten?
So, yeah. And I, Cindy can speak to the primary school. We have a lot of small groups happening right now, which is awesome, more than I've seen my time at the elementary school. I think a lot of it is because we, we have a better idea of where the individual's kids are, and we can say, you know, these four kids have similar skills. So we taught the lesson, you know, for 15 minutes. We're doing some centers now, and we have these four kids coming over to work on this math skill that we know they haven't mastered yet, and those types of things. math skill that we know they haven't mastered yet and those types of things. So I'm seeing it in my classrooms every day as I'm walking through, just, I think the teachers are more confident about knowing where the kids are at, so they, those small groups, it comes more naturally because they know what to work with them on, rather than it being like, I can do a small group, but I'm not quite sure what I should be doing with that. So there's some excitement about that. And like I said, every time I'm up in rooms now, I see lots and lots of small groups, which is awesome, especially with the last two years of learning being disrupted in a lot of different ways. We have kids that have, we did some great learning, but we have a lot of gaps too. And so we got to start filling those gaps as we keep plugging through the curriculum.
I'm seeing the same, but we always did small groups. What I'm seeing more now is if, say in kindergarten, someone still doesn't know their letters and sounds, I'm seeing one-to-one with either the paraprofessional in the room or with the teacher. Oh, they're working on that, you come up here and we're going to drill those cards again and those foundations, you know? So I'm seeing a lot of that, even in math, where they're pulling kids to the side one-to-one or two kids that have that same weakness. And that's very beneficial, of course, because it's, you know, it's right there.
And I think that next step is those CBMs, because right now, you know, we can test three times a year. That's really not, you know, we get to November and it's not great information at that point, right? It's old. So we need those dipsticks to be able to say, okay, we've been working on fluency, have there been gains with fluency? And if there haven't, then we need to adjust course there. So our title teachers are kind of leading the charge like right now with getting that. And then we're going to disseminate, continue to grow that as we do it. So as they get comfortable, they're going to share it with other people. People want the information. So they've been bugging us like, when do we get to learn about this? When do we get, which is exciting because it's not like we're, you guys have to do this. It's a, they want to use it because the information's actually really cool that they get.
The CBM, is that a one-to-one type thing?
Yep. Those are the one-minute ones, they take one-to-one and there's, they're on fluency, I can't even think of all the nonsense words.
It's nonsense words, oral reading, letter sounds, letter names, so the teacher can select which skill to test them on.
So I think the partnerships is just a really cool idea. My daughters got to work together, so you performed a small miracle without even utilizing it. So no, I think that's really awesome. I think that's a great thing to do. And I agree, like, obviously it's great for the first graders to get that exposure and comfort level, but I think especially for the fifth graders to kind of like, you know, bulk up their sense of responsibility and kind of strengthen them on their step to middle school too. So now I'm going to ask a probably obnoxious question. I love the focus on literacy. I'm wondering if there are any plans, and I understand this is not all, it's not like you just do three things through the course of a year, I know that. I was wondering if there's any specific plans with regards to math, given that that seemed to be a particularly weak area in the district.
Well, we did a pilot last year in grade one for Into Math. It was a different program and found, my teachers did not like it. And since they went back to the Go Math this year, they're absolutely in heaven. They said the kids are doing much better with it. We do a lot of hands-on, everything is game-based, everything is with dice and cards. We had some professional development a few years back and they loved it because it is, it's all manipulatives, it's all visuals and hands-on. So we do a lot of math centers. And the program is supposed to be upgraded a little bit to give more resources and online. So we haven't seen that yet, but they are working on it. So I don't know about your building.
So we have the ST math goal, and I do think implementing that effectively is going to make some positive gains. Because if you look at MCAS and where our students scored well, they score well with the RHO concepts, you know, they know their multiplication facts, they can subtract with regrouping. What they can't do is think critically about math, and ST math is more higher-level thinking, where they have to really look at a new situation, they have to analyze it and they have to figure out how to solve it. And so I think doing that more consistently will expose them to more of those types of concepts, and so they'll be more prepared for that when they see it on MCAS. Also, we're doing a lot of work with the hands-on piece, because I think especially, like you get to those older grades and you're multiplying fractions and what does that even mean, right? Like helping a kid conceptualize that and get a foundation of what that even means so they can use it in other situations is kind of tricky, but we got to do that with hands-on things. You got to get up manipulatives, if, you know, base 10 blocks and link your cubes and all those different tools that we have, we got to get those out and use them. And, you know, as I'm doing my walkthroughs and observations, the feedback I'm giving, like I saw a couple math lessons this week and the feedback I gave was, where's the hands-on? We got to make sure the hands-on is there. And I'm really pushing that because if they're not exposed to that, I love math, math is like my passion, and it makes sense to me, but a lot of kids, those abstract things are really hard to get a grasp on. And if we don't give them that real-world application and a reason for why things work the way they do, then they're never going to, it's just an algorithm they're memorizing and as soon as they stop using it, they forget it. And so that's really where we're spending our time and effort, is making sure that we're using ST math with fidelity, the way it's designed to be used. And then as we're planning our lessons, giving them that hands-on, real-world application piece. And we're doing a lot of work with that. It's not in our goals, but we're doing, I mean, our professional development, staff meetings, things like that, that's, those are the things we're talking about.
Great, thank you. And are kids moving ahead in that as they can, as they're able to, so they, some will move faster ahead in ST math and others will be?
Absolutely.
And the teachers can assign, like if they're working on fractions, they can assign the fraction unit, but then there's also just the general path that they go from the start of the year to the end of the year. And like, we get a report, I looked yesterday, last week, I sent out a report to my staff just kind of giving an update on where we were. We're at like 10% of the way through the program as a school. So some kids are, you know, 25%, and some kids are 4%, but as a school, we're about 10% of the way through, which is, we're more than 10% of the way through the school year. I don't think, we're not going to end up at 100, but we have kids that are going to finish the entire year of it. And some kids just need a little bit more time. It gives them the time they need on those concepts too. They don't, we don't have to rush them through the next thing. So as one kid's ready, they can move on, and as one kid needs more time, they can keep working on that concept. So it's another way for us to spiral that curriculum too, so that even if we're, you know, they could be working on a September, October concept in March if that's what they need to work on. And like I said, the teachers can still assign something that's pertinent for that time period also.
That's what they like. They like to be able to say, this is the skill I'm working on, so I'm assigning this to this group because they're ready for that. Or this group needs more practice, so I can assign that skill to that group.
Well, I love the fact that there's collaboration between the primary and the elementary. I wish that the rest of the, we do this model for everybody, especially because as we bridge them up to the next grade, I think that's a great concept that can be utilized because, again, the angst of going from all the different schools, we all know it, kids internalize it. And so I'd like to see that bridging, because I think you guys have done a great model for the whole district to mirror.
And if I can brag on Mr. O'Brien for a second, they had their Halloween Spooktacular concert last week and they invited our fifth graders over, the rest of the school watched it. So I think it's, I'm excited, the after-school enrichment, we've collaborated on that. So I think that's starting to happen. I mean, Mr. O'Brien and I have known each other for two months, but I think in the two months we've known each other, I'm excited about the direction that's going to. And I don't know what's happening between middle school and high school, but I think similar things are going on.
And I agree with like Julie's comments, enrichment, after-school activities, that is huge for us and however we can get more kids involved, it might be a budgetary line item for the bus transportation, we can figure that piece out too as well. But I'd like that we're trying to figure out how to take, get our kids to not go home in front of the TV and stuff like that, to get them more involved in the community. So anything that we can do. But I love the fact that you guys are really spearheading it and you're taking it on too as well. I know Mr. Romano is doing his own thing too, but I like that we're all being collaborative with it, so I, kudos to everybody.
And it's empathy building too, because you develop a relationship with a kid that you wouldn't have met otherwise of a different age, and you have an attachment that is positive and makes you kind of think twice about how you interact with the other person you haven't met yet.
I don't think people understand how unique and special what you're seeing, what you're seeing here is. And that it typically doesn't happen, you always have that alignment within a building vertically and you have that horizontally across grade levels. But to have it across two buildings is pretty special. And you can see that their goals last year are aligned, their goals this year are aligned. We were joking prior to the meeting, some people here may have caught it off-camera or not, but Cindy was upset that she hasn't seen Mr. Bell in a couple of days and they haven't had the time to get together to collaborate. That's a true relationship they have there, that they do talk, they do collaborate, they do work together, their goals are aligned. So we have that seamless transition from grades one to two, and it's so important. And again, that's starting with Mr. Bell and with Mr. O'Brien. And I think Bob mentioned in his presentation that he's already trying to bring the middle school kids up to the high school for that enrichment. So we're building on that, because when you have that seamless vertical alignment in all four buildings and all four principals talking, you can do some pretty amazing things, and we're seeing it firsthand here. Before you get down, I know Ms. Brown's going to ask about staffing, so.
The only thing I'm still looking for is a .5 ABA, and I have an interview tomorrow, so cross my fingers for that.
I have, I'm in a better spot than I was a couple weeks ago. I think I'm just on one ABA right now and in some long-term subpositions I'm down. But I do have an interview tomorrow also that is promising, so if that, hopefully we're in a much better situation than we were just a couple weeks ago, so we're feeling better.
Good to hear.
We are delighted to hear that, yes.
We are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now is it for me for tonight, although I didn't do a lot of, sorry. Thank you to the principals for that. Mr. Romano will be here presenting next week on his school improvement plan.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, now we're moving on to the school committee and subcommittee reports for the account table report.
I can do this, Julie, I sign them. So I signed warrant 18, school lunch 22 dated 10/29/21, which was two batches totaling And I signed warrant 18, school year 22 dated 10/28/2021, which was 15 batches totaling $67,786.11, and nothing unusual.
Any questions? Thank you, Becky. Now we're ready for the CPAC to come and provide us a yearly update, Ms. Beth Berstrom.
Hi, everybody, I'm Beth. Thank you for having me today. So just to kind of throw it out there, I know a lot of people refer to us as DPAC, but we are the CPAC. But I might, as I'm speaking today, because DPAC was in the culture for a long time, I might say that, but it is the CPAC. We, just to kind of review what we did last year, we still held all of our meetings. Our bylaws say we have to have five, we held eight last year. We did them all virtually, obviously. We had joined Northbridge in their Basic Rights Seminar virtually. We held bi-monthly parent, we call them parents' night outs. And what we do with those is we really just want parents to have a place to come together without administration, without, you know, just a place to be parents and just a place to have a safe place to say, I'm overwhelmed or I need this. So, you know, it's kind of just like a networking time for us. So we had, we only had two of those last year just due to COVID. We are hoping to put that together again. We hosted an inspirational speaker, his name was Jack Smith, and he was a child, he is an adult now, but he talks about his experience growing up with autism. He was identified as high functioning autism at two, and he just really shed a lot of reflection on what it was like going through the school system and what it was like being on an IEP and what his mom fought for. It was really good to see, the end result is that he goes and he speaks all over the state, and he does just a lot. He's a graduate of Worcester State. So it's really, it was really good for our families to see that, like, no matter what your challenges are, you can do whatever you want to do. We did provide some funding for the high school, Stars and Stripes, their Kindness Revolution Cart, which is something that they're so proud of. It's something that we really like supporting, seeing around the district. So they always, anytime CPAC has a dance or any kind of community event, all we do is call Emily and Mary and say, hey, this, I'm always like, so I was thinking. And they always do such beautiful things with the kids. So we're just very grateful for them. We were happy we were still able to have Special Olympics last year in spite of a really challenging year. It was a really great way to end the year, say goodbye to some of our administration and just do some sort of a normal event for us. It was really good. And what was nice is that we saw a lot of, some of the kids came up from other buildings and would just kind of walk by and see them, and it was just nice to have that sense of community. We also provided over the summer, to work through last year in this school was obviously very challenging. Then to work in summers, you know, through extended school year, that was challenging too. And we wanted to appreciate our staff who worked really hard. So we provided a luncheon for them, just as a small token of all that they've done. I personally would not have worked through the summer after last school year, so we're very grateful for that. The Erckhardt family donated a buddy bench, and that came from, a family had come in to one of our CPAC meetings and talked about how their child felt like they weren't being included in play with peers and things like that. And so we were looking at, how can we develop this sense of community? And the mom actually had a book about the buddy bench. And Mr. Erckhardt and his son actually built the buddy bench for us. And John and Matt Aronium were able to present it this year to the kids and explain, it will be between the middle school. It is there now? It's, so just as a place that kids can go and just have a seat so other children know that they might need to be included in play. I completely apologize, I did not provide you guys with our family survey results. I can get those to everybody, Tara does have them. What we did at the end of the school year is we wanted to ask the families what they thought of their children's experience so far. So out of, there's roughly 200-ish kids on IEPs roughly in the district, we received 37 responses back from families, so like roughly like 25%. Speaking with other people in the state, that was actually a really good return rate. One of the things that was really telling to us was, we didn't have anywhere where, like, there wasn't any concerns in particularly just the primary school or just the middle school or just the high school. So everything was kind of even across. I think what stood out to me the most was that parents' voices being heard in meetings. And we had, I think, almost 80% of our families felt that their voices were heard in IEP meetings. One of the other questions that we asked was, is your child making effective progress? And in COVID, it is really difficult for that, and it was pretty much, I want to say 75/25. It was, it was better than I expected it to be. One of the other questions that we asked were, if your child isn't making, if you don't feel your child is making effective progress, do you feel the team is doing everything it can? And that one was pretty high as well, which made me feel really confident in what had been done for our children during COVID. Again, I apologize, I didn't bring it with me, I apologize, I didn't get it to you guys prior to this. One of the other things that was really, at the end, we asked, what do you want? What would you like from us? What can we do for you? The two top things that families want is they want more information on IEP law and process and procedure, and they also want social opportunities. So hearing the district putting in all this stuff is fantastic, that all children can access. And I think that, you know, I know Best Buddies has started back up in the middle school, I know they're going to partner with the elementary school. The more of those activities that children have access to, the better. You know, a school-sponsored activity, a child is more able to access than going out and trying out for even town basketball, because they don't have access to their supports. They don't have access to their stuff like that. So where do we, so what are we looking at this year? So obviously, there's no, it's no secret to anybody that our sped staff, you know, our team chair, our special ed coordinator, and our special ed director all took other positions. It's a really scary time for families. And for some of our kids, actually, who have participated in their IEPs and know kind of who to look for, there's been a few kids that have said, well, what do I do now? Because so-and-so isn't here. So really, the CPAC has to develop goals for the year. And we typically would develop them in May, but obviously with Tara coming on now, we wanted to get her input. And I think the biggest concern is, staffing is a huge concern right now for everybody, not just Douglas Public Schools, but everybody. So to take, to have a whole new special ed administration and to have staffing problems, it's scary. It's absolutely scary for families. One thing that I can say is that I've had, we've had very open dialogues with Tara, with Dr. Viera, especially over the last few weeks, and how are we going to help families and kids feel comfortable and safe where they're at? And what can we do going forward? And we really need to have a lot of conversations, ongoing conversations, about what was done before, what's being done now, and what's the difference and why? And not that there's... And not that there's, people have different styles, people have different ways that they do things. So, how can we, how can we say what we need and have the administration hear what we need and come to common ground? And I think the biggest goals of our CPAC this year are to, A, build a new relationship with our new special ed department, B, increase student engagement in our CPAC. And MasPAC, which is the state level of CPACs, has introduced an initiative this year that it's the Year of You. And it's the year of talking about the children that we're serving. We ask, you know, we can all sit here and create these great plans and look at data, but if a child isn't feeling supported in their school or in their plan or might be feeling over-supported, or whatever the case may be, we want to hear from the high school kids. We want to hear from the middle school kids. We want to hear from the children that are getting the IEPs. I also haven't talked to the board about this, but I'd like to hear from some of the kids that have graduated, that have been on IEPs, that have gone out into the work in the school for us. What is that like now? What do you wish you learned before? Some of those different conversations. You know, we, we're concerned, we're concerned with our staff. We're concerned for our staff, I should say. They have done an amazing job with very, very tough circumstances. You know, I, you see one running here and one running there, and this one grabbing that one, and this one doing that. But our staff are human too, and they're people too. And just making sure that they have the resources they need to support our students because if a teacher's not supported, the children aren't supported. And I think, hearing the things I've heard tonight, I think there's some great plans in place, but making sure that we don't forget that the educators have gone through a trauma too. The kids have, so have the teachers. Everybody sitting in this room has. We, so, so far this year, we were actually able to hold our first workshop. Tara did our Basic Rights Seminar. So, that's something that legally the CPAC is responsible to hold at least once a year. And it was nice, we actually got to host Oxbridge and Northbridge this year. So, it was nice to have other people come to us, although everybody was pretty much on Zoom, but that was cool. And we are looking to build a collaborative with Sutton, Grafton, Northbridge, and Oxbridge, and possibly Melbury, to kind of share resources with, as small towns in terms of CPAC. So, you know, Tara did our Basic Rights Seminar. But if Oxbridge has their one free seminar that they get, what can we have them do so that we can all attend, so that we can kind of pool the resources and have families be able to connect together? And I think that's about it, other than, and I know Josh isn't here, but getting Unified Sports back and getting Teen Night Out back and getting those things back. Those are some things that were really important to us, to our kids. And I think they were things that, you know, other neurotypical children weren't able to participate in as well. And, because I know you're going into budget season, I just want to, our Emily and her crew up there do an amazing job. But getting money for transportation to get kids out to go to Walmart and buy groceries and learn how to cook, or go to Home Depot and learn how to work, like, those things are so meaningful. And yes, we know we've had to keep the kids in the building last year. We know we've had to do all these things, but like, not forgetting that they need those experiences as well. So, when you consider money for next year, we just ask that you think about that as well. And does anybody have any questions?
Can I ask a question? That's, I'm just trying to figure this part out. I haven't really had such a detailed yearly update before, so it was very enlightening. Is CPAC like, I'm not, I don't mean to like, not be talking to you about this. I'm just trying to clarify this. Is this kind of like a PTO where it's more like a volunteer basis? Like, where is?
So, CPAC is, it's, it's a requirement by, by the state that school districts have CPACs. And there's actually line items under MGL as to what the requirements are, what CPACs can do and can't do. In, the general, and Beth, correct me if I make any mistakes. The first thing is to provide feedback on programs and special education services to the school committee and to administration. And the second piece of CPAC is to serve as a resource to other parents as a place to come and get information, get training, just talk to one another. So, those are the two functions of CPAC. So, it's not, it's not just a group that we have created. It's, it's actually a struc, a formal structure that's in place. Where they have formal meetings, they have board members, they have goals.
I also thank you for saying that. We are also in the process of updating our website so that our notes will be on there, our agendas will be on there. We would even like to put our workshops on there so that the parent that can't make it there at 7 o'clock on Tuesday can still access the same information as well. And thank you to the district for providing us with our MasPAC membership again. One of the, one of my favorite parts of that is that we are able to provide an educator, a child and a family, a child over 14 and a family with access to the Visions of Community Workshop. And it's, this year, it's, there's about 40 to 45 different workshops you can go to. But because everything's virtual, you have access to it for like, six months. So, you can go to all 40 workshops, whereas if you had gone in person, you would have gone to eight.
Is there surveys that are being done sort of this year, mid-year, or now to kind of see, identify areas that can be areas for focusing?
Yes. So, at our, I believe it's our, I think it's at our January meeting, we have scheduled to re, kind of revamp our survey and just kind of say, okay, so, this is where we were at the end of this, last year, and where are we at now? And be able to kind of do more of that immediate, I think we'll end up probably doing at least biannual surveys, but like Dr. or Ms. O'Brien said, I do agree. There's, there's a lot of surveys right now. So, we don't want to overwhelm families, but we also want families to have the access to, to give that feedback. So, we're kind of trying to find that balance. But right now, I'm thinking probably February, we will send out our next one.
They just, it seems like that would be instrumental to, like, determining where to put our efforts, you know? A lot of efforts in little bits across the board is not really going to bring a lot of progress to any one area. So, you know, if we can actually bring progress to something, what would that be, you know?
Agreed.
You just sort of raised a question in my mind when you were talking to, you know, speaking about teachers as human beings, and that they've, you know, we've all been through this. I'm wondering if it's ever, we talk about social-emotional learning so much for the students. Is it ever part of professional development for the teachers and admin to like, take care of themselves?
Some districts do have wellness committees. And they do, like, the district I work for, we do have a wellness program. And you get like, a monthly wellness letter, and then you have different outings that you can go on. They do different things. It doesn't really cost a lot of money.
Yeah.
I know that we talked about it at our PD, and I know principals talked about it, but it's something we could do a better job with.
Okay. Maybe that's something we can think about this year.
Anybody else? So, I would like to say, I think it's a collaboration of the administrative, the superintendent, as well as the CPAC coming together for us to all form and be informed on what's going on because this is the critical population that we have. Anything we can do from the schools to make sure that they are inclusive, which I know they are because I've seen them. But the more we can build that foundation between having max participation for all kids, I think is critical because the more we have the community together with our critical kids, the better we're all going to be for it. And it teaches that empathy part too, as well, the social-emotional empathy. So, whatever we keep doing. If we could, I think the survey results, I know you're going to share them with Tara and Dr. Vera.
I will make sure you guys let them as well. I do apologize.
I think that's going to be part, because we can do that too, as part of our goal building for next year to make sure we're looking at it, assessing it, and it's mindful. So, I would encourage, if, if we want to have her come back with her results after her survey is, I mean, I normally only come normally yearly, but I think it's kind of critical because we're going to be setting goals and everything else for, to invite Ms. Berstrom to come back in the springtime, like, because you've got a lot of it going on. So, but I, I would encourage, if you would like to, we would be more than willing to have you come back in the springtime to come and give us some feedback.
Absolutely. Thank you guys so much.
And thank you both to Tara and Dr. Vera for everything too.
Yeah. And I, if I could just add, I, you know, I think that, obviously, the past year plus has been super challenging. And there's been, like you mentioned, a lot of turnover in sped department. So, I think that continuing to have communication with all the parties involved as much as we can, you know, share information with each other, you know, we can do good by the kids, do well by the kids if we, you know, continue to share information with each other.
I agree. I absolutely agree. Thank you, Beth.
We're almost fully staffed, it looks like, amongst the districts, would you say?
We're miss, we're missing one to two.
Bodies.
Bodies per building.
Oh, one to two per building?
One to two, I mean, some, I think Cindy has, has a point five.
Point five.
But, you know, Mr. Bell worked really hard to get an adjustment council. We have an adjustment council that's out. We worked probably about six months trying to find an adjustment counselor. So, we're kind of pulling from various resources to staff that position. So, although that didn't come up as, in opening, because we filled it, but we filled it by pulling bodies from two or three other locations in order to make sure that Mr. Bell has some resources. Mr. Bell and Mr. Aronian are also acting as the adjustment counselors in the elementary schools for some entry-level triage work. So, although that didn't show up as a staffing need by pulling people from two or three buildings to help staff that, that's in other ways leaving some buildings short-staffed, so.
So, maybe that can be something that, like, I can schedule a meeting with you about, just to kind of see because that is really another added body that you're down if you're adding responsibilities to other staff members.
To other people, correct.
Which takes away, which limits what they can do and who they can work with during this.
Correct.
Absolutely. Okay.
So, we have, a lot, a lot of the stuff we've been doing is by piece bill because again, there's just not, the bodies aren't out there.
Because my question was, you know, as these numbers have been coming down at every meeting, are, are the parents feeling some relief with that? And that would probably be why, because everybody's being stretched so thin.
And for a lot of these, they've just happened within the past week, week and a half. So, this week, so they, they haven't been fully onboarded and trained and brought up to speed. So, they wouldn't feel that relief yet because it's, it's just happening now.
Because I think that's something that I would like to get a sense of is, you know, what is it going to take for, for parents to feel secure that the support is there? And what are people doing now to fill that role? And, you know, is it sustainable? Is it not sustainable? And that's something I'd be really interested in knowing.
I think that, you know, I, I can share a personal story. So, my, my child went to the hospital, their teacher went with her. Her grandmother came to pick her up at the school, at the hospital because there was nobody to pick up my child's teacher because the school was just barely making it. So, not that everybody isn't making their best effort to fill those positions. Dr. Vera and I have had a lot of conversations, Tara and I have had a lot of conversations. But there's definitely, when you're just making it, well, then there's COVID. So, we can't come if we're coughing. So, there's, there's a lot of layers to what families are seeing. And there's a lot of layers to what kids are seeing too. And so, it's, it's working through that. I have talked more to Tara and Dr. Vera in the last two weeks than I ever have. And, which I'm appreciative of because I think we're beginning to have a lot of conversations. And I think we are trying to get the word out there that we're looking for help. But it is a concern.
Are other areas that you, are, do you know if other area towns are similar?
I can tell you, I get headhunted every day.
Every town is having the same problem.
Okay.
Yeah. Going from the same pool.
Yep. Yeah.
We used to have, and I'll let the principal speak, for para-professionals, we used to post for paras, like Cindy used to joke, "I wait until August because I know if I put it out, that I'll get 15, 20, 25 people to apply for a para position." And if I do it too early in the year, a lot of the people who apply for para jobs are also looking for teaching jobs. So, if you advertise in April, May, and June for a para job, there's a probably, strong probability that in June, July, and August, that para professional is going to get a teaching job, so then you have a vacancy. So, a lot of times, schools will wait till August to hire for paras. And again, we're getting 15, 20, 25 applicants for position. We're lucky if we get one.
But college graduation is right around the corner, so hopefully.
We're, and unlike, in certain positions, you have to make sure that it's not just a warm body. You have to make sure that the person that you're putting in the position, you know that they're working with kids. So, you have to, it's not just a body, which adds another layer to some of the screening that principals have had to do when they're interviewing people. So, we've gone from, again, 20, 15, 20, 25 people applying for a job to hoping we get one.
And what people don't also understand is, like, I remember Neely, and I'm sure Farah, you're in the same situation, is they, all this behind-the-scenes work that's going on, trying to figure out how, like, doing the testing, doing the, trying to figure out, like, can we keep this kid here? Can we do this? Can we do that? Can we move? There's so many things that I know that you're doing in the background that people don't realize that you are doing in the background to make things work. Because every once in a while, she'd come and she'd say, "Well, I need this person." But it wasn't just like, she would come to us randomly. It was like, extensive work that she would do in order to come up with that. Trying to make every little inch or squeeze something out of, like, tiny things. Like, it was just, there's a lot of work that goes on in the background that people don't realize. And, you know, in, in this time, I know it's, it's hard to explain it to people when it's frustrating and it's affecting your kid. But I know that you are doing a lot of work, and I know that you're obviously doing a lot of work too. So, and I, I thank you.
And I think too, Tara had said, during one of the conversations that we had had was like, how much she wants to be more in the classroom. But on the, you know, when she's a bus monitor part-time, she can't be in the classroom. You know, so there's, you know, there's definitely a concern as a mom of what things are going on. But I think, I do think there's effort going into changing those things.
And I think that statement right there just highlights where we're at when it comes to looking for staffing, where before, we really never had an issue looking for, for bus monitors. Last year, it's not, but at this point, we have our Director of Special Education riding buses to make sure kids' services are being met because we can't find a bus monitor.
But it's happening everywhere.
And it's happening.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We, we had the conversation today, and I think someone went to Dunkin' Donuts and it was closed at 6 o'clock.
Yes, that was me.
Because they can't sta-
Noon.
It's everywhere.
Because they can't staff it.
Which I think highlights even more why this community building and this effort on school to school and community outreach makes a huge difference because I know, like, all students, but especially sped students, a lot of them need that consistency. And when we can't provide that for them because of short staffing, it's upsetting. The more that we can build a solid base of feeling like a safe and welcoming space where they're, where they trust where they are, and they have faces that they trust, and they have relationships that they trust, that's really important.
Being that trauma-informed, you know, when you never see the same person all the time. Yes, you've got a, you've got a person, but you didn't get the same person. That's hard. I mean, perhaps maybe that's more of a reason why having the wellness or employee health or whatever you want to call it initiative to, you know, help our teachers right now so that maybe they would feel like they could go take that extra bus shift that they would have taken before. But right now, they're just too burned out to do that.
And not to belittle the staffing piece of it, but it's just, three, four years ago, a staff member had sniffles, they came to work. Now, they're not. That adds a layer of people not coming in.
Absolutely.
You, we didn't have COVID. Now, you have a staff member with COVID, they're out for 14 days. So, if a bill, so it's very possible that you could have two staff members across the district with COVID. So if a, so it's very possible that you could have two staff members across the district with COVID, and two or three staff members who wake up not feeling well, do the right thing and not stay home. So now you have five people out, where two years ago, those five bodies would have been in the district. So again, it's just those layers.
And there's even some districts that if you have a family member that has some symptoms, they want you staying home too. So it's hard.
It's hard.
It's really hard.
It's a challenge. I think we all can appreciate that. We appreciate, like I said, the collaboration, the administration, the CPAC, as well as the teachers, just coming in every day, giving it their all. And we do understand the rigors of everything. I think we all have the COVID fatigue is really.
It's real.
It's real, so we hear you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, now moving on to the consent agenda. The review of the August, I mean, not August, October 6th meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for October 6, 2021.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Becky. All those in favor? Next is the October 20th meeting minutes. Anybody have any issues with these? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for October 20th, 2021.
Second.
Lisa made the motion, Becky second. All those in favor? And now for the third reading of the BEDH, Public Participation at School Committee.
Sure, so we have, again, the policy in front of you. I think the only question that came up from the last meeting, which I confirmed with council was.
Student address.
Was the student address. I'm trying to find the number. We ask people to state their name and address. And the concern came up about students stating their address. And the attorney said it was a reasonable request to not have students publicly state their addresses on camera. So we can, as a chair, you could say, you're a student, just state your name and grade. You don't have to state your address if you don't want to. So that was a request that he thought was reasonable within everything. And then other than that, there really isn't any changes from what I presented the last time at the second reading on the 18th.
Interesting note, that was actually on the news, that some other districts, they're making a big deal about that, about sharing names and addresses and stuff with students.
It was a good one, yeah.
I had one thought, on point to the last sentence, that the chair may favor no particular order, those speakers who are, blah, blah, blah. I thought that we had talked about having students in that list as well. I don't suppose that it actually matters. But I remember sort of thinking, students are.
I thought we.
I thought we had it in there.
And I thought we had it in there.
And then I looked back again, and I think it just says, parents and guardians of students. It might not matter.
And they would fit under Douglas Residence.
Right, unless they were choice in.
Unless they were choice in.
I mean, it doesn't, I don't think the language as it is recludes it, but if we can, if there's an easy way to add that in and pass it as amended.
We can add, the chair may favor no particular order, those speakers who are, and just start right off with students, parents or guardians of students, Douglas Residence, or in appropriate circumstances, a town of Douglas employee. So we can add that right after, right at the start.
If everybody's okay with that. I think that we'd had that, like, had a conversation about it. It's just not.
We did, yeah.
Can you just clarify that, what you're asking, Becky?
So, like, the chair may favor no particular order, and then it lists parents or guardians of Douglas students, Douglas Residence, or in appropriate circumstances, a town of Douglas employee. So it leaves the liberty of the chair to say whatever, you know, like, let's say it's a topic that has to do with, I don't know.
Sports.
Sports, and the parents are really heated about it, and we don't have any students here. But there's other, you know, like, there's teachers too. Well, then maybe the chair wants to let the parents speak first. And depending on limited time, blah, 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 blah. But in conversation, we had talked about students themselves being in this list, because if students show up, we want to hear them.
Okay, so you're asking that students be listed first? So that it's clear that students would be going first?
They don't have to go first.
If they wanted to go first, I think the priority would be to listen to the students first. I think because that's the voice we want to hear.
Right, like, listing them first implies that they probably will get priority, but they don't have to get priority. We just want to acknowledge that they are, they are a priority in the list.
So we'll hold on approving these and.
Or you can pass it as amended.
Is everybody in agreement with that? Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion for the third reading to pass with the amended verbiage we did.
Second.
Second by, so moved by, motion made by Lisa, second by Becky. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Now for the School Business and Operations Managers Report.
I do have you, this evening, I put them in the end of your, in each of your packets. And I do have budgetary transfers for the FY22 budget, request number one. And these are all requests from administrators. Finally getting caught up a little bit on transfers. Does anyone have any questions?
Do we have questions for Courtney?
A move that we approve fiscal year 2022 budgetary transfer request number one, school committee meeting November 3, 2021.
Second. Motion made by. Julie, sorry, this has been a long day. Second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Okay, thank you very much. And I also have this evening FY2022 reclassifications number one, basically moving $175, sorry, from the middle school athletic revolving fund to the high school. So it was basically a middle school student, but they did play, it was a high school sport. So it just went in the wrong account.
Need questions on this? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve the FY2022 reclassification number one, school committee meeting November 3, 2021.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, second by Becky. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any topics not anticipated?
Yep, I have something to say. All right, I want to end this meeting by saying this following quote from a guy that my son sent to me last night. And I thought it was appropriate to end the meeting, and I'd like to begin it next time too, which is this guy named Ernie Johnson. And he says, make somebody's life better. There's value in everybody. And there's a really cool thing that I want to send to Dr. Vera, and he can take a look at it. And it's a great video on YouTube. It's five minutes long. And it's something I think a lot of people should take into account.
Send it to me.
It's awesome. And I just want to encourage that, that, especially with what we've been talking about, and like, all kids in this school, no matter if you're a special ed kid or somebody that's like a high-end learning learner, or just, as we call them, regular students. Really, make somebody's life better. There's value in every person here.
Absolutely, Julie. I agree.
Thank you.
We don't need to do executive session. I just wanted to do a footnote for us. We have an upcoming school committee meetings. We are canceling the December 1 meeting and doing a placeholder on December 8. And so our next school committee meeting is November 17. But then December 1 has been deleted, but we have a placeholder on December 8. We'll know more on November 17 whether or not we need to go forth and use the December 8 placeholder meeting at first school committee. And then the following will go back to the regular cycle on December 15. And then I'd be looking for a motion for adjournment for this evening.
A move that we adjourn the November 3 school committee meeting at 8:40 PM.
Motion made by Becky, second by. Second by, all those in favor? Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.